Good evening, everyone. I am Carolyn Morissette, the Vice Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It is 6:00 PM on Thursday, September 19th, 2019. We are meeting at one government center in the committee hearing room. This is a meeting of a local public body, and as such, it is subject to revisions of Mass General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 20, commonly known as the open-meeting law. Pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 30A and Section 20, Subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Our recording secretary this evening is Brittany Feria, the lady to my left. She is recording an audio version. And Fall River Government TV, Mr. Alex Mello is recording both a video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now, and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. Present this evening are permanent members to my left are John Frank, James Conkens, and then to my right Greg Brillant, and alternate members Dan Dupreier and David Saber. The gentleman to my immediate right is William Roth, the Director of Planning for the City of Fall River. Brittany, have all petitions to be considered, been properly advertised, and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulation of the Zoning Board of Appeals and Mass General Law's Chapter 48 as amended.
Yes.
I declare the September 19th, 2019 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the board, including the petitioners, abutters, anyone in support or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the Chair. The Board's rules and regulations direct the Board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for that petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this Board is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This Board's authority exists pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 40A and is limited in scope in deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the Zoning Board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this Board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after a decision of the Board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance, 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the City Clerk's Office or from the Planning Department. I remind everyone that the Building Inspector is the zoning enforcement authority, and you are here this evening because the Building Inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The newly adopted City Charter, Section 9-18, mandates that all multiple-member bodies develop and adopt rules or policy for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizen input on zoning board specific matters at the end of this meeting. A sign and sheet is on the table in the back of the room. Finally, I disclose that an official copy of the Fall River zoning ordinance is available at the City's Clerk's Office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. Are there any questions before we begin? We will first hear Agenda Item Number One, and John Frank, our secretary, John Frank, our secretary, will chair this item.
We have Agenda Item Number One, Errol Antonelli, care of Joseph Machado Esquire, 1187 Plymouth Avenue, Lot F-291, variance request to operate onsite kitchen for takeout restaurant, as well as a special permit request to change the existing commercial use to a convenience store under 5,000 square feet, waiving requirements in the A2 District, Lot Size 8383, square feet. Introduce yourself, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Attorney Joseph Machado. I'd like to thank you distinguished Board members for allowing me to be able to speak with you this evening. If it is okay with the Chair, may I proceed?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I represent the parties that are involved here with this request for a permit to be able to change the approved use into being that for a convenience store, and as well as a request for a restaurant variance, so this way takeout food and ready-made order onsite food may be prepared for patrons that will visit a proposed business that hopes to make its home in 1187 Plymouth Avenue. The owner of the property is Errol Antonelli, who is the individual requesting the permit and the variance for the property tonight. He is doing so both as the property owner and as well as on behalf of his potential tenants, of which he has an agreement with so long as the permit and variance are approved tonight. The proposed tenants are Juan Julio Alas and Angie Thompson. Angie Thompson and Julio Alas are a great story. Hard-working individuals, have a beautiful, lovely family, and they have a dream of being able to open up a family-owned and operated business. They're hoping to be able to get permission from the Board in order to be able to open a convenience store that will focus on having unique items for individuals to buy, for groceries, for patrons to be able to come in and purchase for their homes, and to be able to serve unique onsite Latin American dishes that Angie will prepare herself. Errol Antonelli has prepared the property and such to where parking on the premises is available for the owners of the potential businesses, again, as long as everything goes well. They'll be able to park in the parking lot that is present, so available parking spaces on the street will be available for patrons to visit. We understand and know that there is some limited parking space on the exterior of the building on the street, so Mr. Antonelli is trying to do everything he can to allow it to where as many people can attend the business at any given time. The unit in question currently sits vacant. As the Board knows, this was once the home of TriStar Oil. Ms. Antonelli was concerned, or excuse me, was connected with Mr. Alas and Ms. Thompson regarding, again, their dreams of having their family-owned and operated business, and as well, as long as we're able to get this approved, again, we have an opportunity to be able to help them to achieve their dream of opening up this store. The proposed business hopes to be an asset and a staple of the community. Again, they want to be able to serve groceries for the individuals, they want to be able to provide unique dishes for the community, and they really do hope, again, to be, again, a staple and an asset of the community. So I'd like to thank you very much for your consideration tonight. I know we're probably pushing the three-minute mark, but again, thank you for your consideration, and I'll open up the floor to any questions that the Board may have. I'll answer them to the best of my abilities.
What are going to be hours of operation?
The hours of operation, to their understanding right now, this is purely just from discussions between us and them, is from seven until five.
Seven days a week?
And that is my understanding, that I believe it is seven days a week. I don't have an exact answer on that one. They said that they were going to try and operate as much as humanly possible. One would make the assumption that that might be seven, at worst, and expect it to be six.
Okay, well, you need to, you want to put it to six, then, just in case?
I'd put it to six just in case. This way, in case they do decide to operate on Sundays, they'll be able to, you know, do lots.
There was a prior, there was a prior variance that was handed to us, and at that point in time, they said there were nine to 12 existing off-street parking spaces?
I believe so. That is correct.
And are those parking spaces going to be utilized for this business?
Those parking spaces, I assume, are, they're hoping to be able to utilize for the business. They won't be specifically, you know, marked off as being for the business, but they will be available for that off-street parking for patrons who are there.
Is there any sit-down dining?
At this moment, yeah, at this moment, there is none in the building, but they do hope to be able to have some sit-down locations.
Your parking needs if you have people at work on your time?
And this is residential above, correct?
Yes, sir.
How many units are there then going to be? Two residential units above the commercial unit?
Yes, sir. To my understanding, yes, sir.
So the off-street parking is going to be, a good portion of that will be utilized by the residents.
Well, there is a parking lot in the back that I believe is for use of the individuals who are in the, or in the building.
So the six would be for the?
Six and five.
Six and five.
Four required for the two units, and then the balance can be for the commercial.
Okay. Could you talk a little bit about, part of this is a variance request, so to operate the kitchen. Talk a little bit about hardship.
Absolutely. So at this point in time, obviously, they are unable to be able to install and operate a kitchen for them to be able to do takeout or be able to have food made onsite. As you guys know, the classification currently at the moment does not allow that, and they are in this moment requesting that you guys do revise that for the purpose of allowing them to be able to, again, create that kitchen, to be able to provide that unique Latin American food that they're hoping to be able to cook onsite for their consumers, or at least their, you know, patrons who will be attending there.
Okay, so now the request is for takeout only, but you did mention something about potentially future asking for seating.
That's something that they would have to address at a future date. From my understanding, again, just from our conversations, that this is what I've proposed to you is their, their plan. If things are to change, they understand and know that they'll have to take steps in the future to be able to make any future decisions.
From a land use standpoint, you know, changing the commercial use, I think, you know, these little small groceryettes and serves the neighborhood, and I think it's probably a good thing. We're kind of going back more to traditional type neighborhood, and that's a good thing.
Thanks, sir.
The one thing I would request, if you did approve it, is a specific that it's takeout only and no seating be required. That would be the one condition, and I know that Attorney Brilliant discussed hours of operation. I'm probably going to let him mention that.
Yeah, for restaurant, for food service, I'm not sure you're five o'clock closing. Really the maximum that you want to go for.
Yeah.
And, and I think that that is something that I'll have to discuss with them in order to see where their, you know, where their looks like.
But if we grant a variance with time restrictions, you don't want to do that. You want to go to the outer perimeters of what you might be looking for.
I would think eight or nine PM.
I was going to say that as well.
So seven to nine PM?
They don't have to go to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want you to come back. Seven to nine PM.
And that would be greatly appreciated. Honestly, thank you.
Anyone else on the Board having any other questions? Signage? Yeah, I'm just asking if we have anything else before I do.
Is there a plan for signage?
Signage, yes.
So the plan for signage at this point in time is that there is an awning that is currently existing outside of the building, which used to be for TriStar. They are hoping to reutilize that by putting, you know, their own branding on it.
Non-illuminated same sign that's there, now just replacing the lettering.
From my understanding, yes, sir, that is what they're planning on doing.
Very good. Okay. Any other questions from the Board? Is anyone here in favor? Anyone in opposition?
I'll make a motion to grant with the hours of operation, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, with the stipulation that it's takeout only. Anything else, Mr. Roth?
Do we need this to be bifurcated or is it a special permit?
I think we have a variance and a special permit, so we have to do two.
I apologize.
Yeah, I just, so.
So the bifurcated hearing would be a special permit that the change in use is no more detrimental. That would be the first thing.
I'll make that first motion.
I'll second it.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I'll reiterate my second motion relative to the, well, I'm sorry, now we have to take a special permit vote, then a variance, or all at once, Mr. Roth?
Are they, they're T.
You voted on the special permit.
Only, only that it's not more detrimental, so now we have to take a vote on the special permit?
The special permit, yes.
Okay. Relative to the special permit, I move that special permit be granted to change the existing commercial use to a convenience store, as well as grant the variance request to operate onsite kitchen for takeout restaurant only, subject to the conditions of the hours being 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and that it be limited to takeout service only. That's my motion.
Hold on a second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, do we have a motion on the variance request to operate the kitchen?
Put it all in one.
He put it in one?
Put that second, put all in one.
Very good. Okay, granted. Thank you.
Thank you very much for spending this here time tonight. Thank you.
Could you get Ms. Morissette for me?
The second agenda item is Matthew Machado, 61 Lafayette Street, Lot K, 2190, is a variance request to extend existing garage, waiving maximum lot coverage, side and rear yard requirements in the M District, Lot Size 5,000 square feet plus.
So we want to build a bigger garage.
Could you identify yourselves with the record?
Oh, sorry, Shannon Knight, sorry.
I'm Matthew Machado.
So we need a bigger garage because the long, narrow driveway we have now is tough for tenants to park, and with bad weather and school right next to us, it would be beneficial for everybody to have more spaces to park, to get the cars off the street.
That's going to be used for your tenants?
Yep, tenants as well.
Especially on the parking vans, make it easier to get cars off the street.
That's good.
Can you address the lot coverage, though? Doesn't this put you over?
The garage already on there is already grandfathered in, I guess, because it's already on the boundary line. I'm just going the existing boundary line, the backside, I'm just leaving the four feet away from the neighbor.
But the question was really on the percentage of your lot that would be covered by buildings. That's your main variance.
You're asking to waive that, though, that's, because you're going to be over, asking to waive that.
Yeah. They're asking to go to 87%.
Go over to over anyhow, right?
And taking a look at it, they are over the 25%, but now they're going to take it to 87.6%. The existing garage is 5,000, or the existing garage, the 25 by 22 and a half, is, is already over the maximum requirement. In the zoning district, the maximum requirement is 750 square foot garage or 12% of lot area, whichever is the lesser. In this case, 5,000 square foot lot, that's a 600 square foot garage. Their current garage is 500, the existing garage is just under the required 600 square feet. It's 563 square feet.
They want another 600 square feet.
Essentially, yes. So they are, their garage conforms, however, they want to double that and make it non-conforming, and.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have, I would have a problem if it wasn't so far as they're going to use the garage for their tenants, because I'm going to stipulate that they have a certain number of off-street parking places. That's going to be my, right here, so they have to use it for their tenants. How many parking spaces are you going to have for your tenants after this is done? How big is that garage going to be for how many, how many cars?
It's going to be for two cars, the garage. It's going to fit two cars inside.
The addition?
Very tightly, very tightly.
So you're going to have four, what do you, what do you use the existing garage for?
The existing garage is for drive storage, stuff for the house, maintenance stuff. I have tools in there for my company's stuff. That's why I wanted an expansion to park my own vehicle inside. I can't even get my truck inside the garage itself, and it's a factory-type truck.
Where do your tenants park now?
Tenants park out on the street. When it's snow time, I tell them to park in the driveway. It's easier for everybody.
Any members on the Board have questions?
I just want, the type of business that you're in, we just want to see that what you might be storing in the garage is.
I do construction, I work for that company, I don't own.
So it would be non-comurbables, if anything, and just on a day-to-day basis, not, not all of these.
No, it's just this.
Any other questions from members of the Board? Is anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to it?
It's too close to my property.
Can you identify yourself, ma'am?
My name is Polly Raish, 71 Lafayette Street, in Fall River, and I'm the neighbor. It's very, it's, it's going to be very, it's going to be hard to park in, it's just going to be so close to my property. It's going to be, it's going to be high, it's going to be difficult to get in, it's going to block all the sunlight, it's just, and then, and it's so, when they're backing out, it's going to be tall, it's so close, it's just very, very close, it's hard to explain, it's just so close.
Can you ask Ms. Raish how close, because her, her building is not shown on, on the plan, how, how close is she now to her lot line?
Yeah, if you look at the small square, you get an idea of.
She's like a, she's like a full tour.
Yep, yep.
She has something to come in.
That's how I was going to give her the full, away from her garage.
And what are the setback requirements under 86446? What are the setback requirements?
The setback requirements for the shed are, for the garage are, I have it written down.
I think it's four.
Four feet. So they meet the side yard setback of four feet. They do not meet the rear yard setback. That's point eight feet.
Point eight.
Which is, so they are, they're over, over three feet shy of that.
It's doubling in size.
And the proposed garage will be 1,012.5 square feet, which is well over the 600 square feet that's allowed per code. And they're over the lot coverage to 87.6. From a status perspective, they're taking the only grassed area in a very small lot, and they're paving it, and putting, they're adding more building area and paving, literally the only, they're grassed in backyard. That's a, from a drainage standpoint, that's of concern. If you were to want to grant it, typically, I would want site plan review, however, the only thing, site plan review that we would require would be an underground infiltration system, and I know that we have in the past on our variance, condition that if it was approved, require that with the building permit, an underground infiltration unit be sized for the entire garage, I want the existing and new, because they're adding so much asphalt. And said plan shall be stamped by an engineer, including proper infiltration calculations. That's if you decided, however, I think that's, that you're, you're putting an extreme amount of impervious area in development on an extremely small lot.
In answer to the question on night blocking the view, what height this is building, or the addition.
Whatever you guys allow me to, seven feet, eight feet, whatever you guys allow me to, whatever I can conform with your codes.
Is it going to be in the same line with the existing building?
Yes, that's, that's why I want it, it's going to fall in.
The height?
Oh, the height, the curvy, yes. If you guys allow me to.
How tall is it now?
I have a six-foot door, I need at least a seven-foot garage door to get my truck in.
Yeah, but it's one-story, right?
One-story, yes, garage, one-story, yes. Her garage next door is two stories. My existing garage is only one story.
Any other questions from members of the Board? Is there a motion?
She, does that, maybe you have something else that she wants to say?
Ma'am, I, I agree with what the maximum requirements are, I just think that it's... She doesn't want to make problems. She wants, you know, maximum requirements, if it's legal, that's why, but she doesn't want it, it's so close, it's only four feet from where my property is. I don't think it's safe for fire, I don't think it's safe for, it's so crowded, it feels so crowded, it's, I have to drive in and go around and go in and back around, it's not a straight in.
Thank you. Is there a motion from a member of the Board?
I mean, I'll make a motion to grant with something to the conditions of, that Mr. Roth stated, as long as it's being used for his own vehicles. I understand the concern relative to paving it, but, I mean, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's granting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Agenda item number three, Paula Boyd, 969 Charles Street, Lot B. Agenda item number three, Paula Boyd, 969 Charles Street, Lot B, 1822, variance request to subdivide the lot, leaving the existing multifamily on one lot, 5730 square feet, and leaving the existing garage on a second lot, 2775 square feet, waiving requirements in the CMD District.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Dan Aguirre. I'm a senior project manager at Sitech Engineering, with addresses here in the city of Dartmouth and Marshfield. As the Vice Chair stated, property is located at 969 Charles Street. It's an existing three-family structure on a parcel of land, approximately 8,500 square feet. This is directly across the street from the Corber Hat Factory, just down the street from King Philip Mill. So as you take that right onto Charles, you look off to your left, beautifully well-kept, like a mansard roof type of a building that's three families, and then there's a large garage that you see, almost as large as, as the dwelling itself tucked off into the rear. This property has been in the family's ownership dating back to the 40s, and the applicant, Paula Boyd, his mom had recently lived up until within the last six months at this location. Because she has now been moved to a home out of state, he now needs to dispose of real estate, whether for nursing home purposes, or I think you all understand how, what direction that, that takes you. The proposal is to allow him to keep this existing garage, so that he has a, like a little wood workshop in there, he has a bunch of stuff stored there that the family has kept and accumulated after all of these years. He would like to be able to keep that garage portion of the property for his own use. The existing parking spaces that are provided in the existing driveway will remain, and there will be an easement granted to Lot One, so that off-street parking could still be provided. There is not a parking problem on the streets, however, since there is existing parking onsite, I explained to Mr. LaVoy that diminishing that would not, that the Board would not look advantageous upon that. So he agreed to what we've shown here with allowing the tenants to park in the parking area the way that he does now. This is a commercial mill district, this is a non-conforming lot the way that it sits now, so we do not have a conforming parcel of land. So what we would like to do is carve out this garage as shown on the plan on a 2,775 square foot parcel of land, leaving the three family on a lot with 5,730 square feet. There's no construction activity being proposed, both buildings will remain as they remain now, the uses will be exactly the same as what they are used for now, but it would allow him to retain ownership of that property that has been owned by the family for a very long time, and would allow him to sell off the existing three-family dwelling.
Mr. Le, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Purposes of maybe even efficiency for your clients, is there any way to put off-street parking on Lot One?
Well, I, I approached that subject to him. Along Charles Street, there is a two-foot retaining wall now, concrete retaining wall, and the cost associated, I mean, when, when we're dealing with this, and a lot of this, again, is cost-driven. again, is cost-driven, you know, germane to this property, not as a, as a money-making thing, I had explained that to him, would you rather put parking in on that side, and right now, that's beautiful lawn on that side of that yard, and there is that retaining wall that we would have to deal with. So he wants to be able to, to sell the home with the yard and keeping the green space that's there now, not introduce new pervious surface, uh, impervious surface to that side with the driveway. So, no, that, that was our first idea, was to, was to put new parking in off of Charles Street.
He's gonna have to sell this with an easement, so whoever they sell that to, they're gonna park on his property all the time, right?
Yeah, and he understands that, yeah. I mean, he doesn't, he does not use the driveway often, it's when he wants to go and, to get stuff out of, when he's got stored there, or, I, when I looked in the window today, again, he's got a circular saw and a couple of pieces of two-by-four, he actually works at Stop &amp; Shop in Dartmouth.
And then I just thought it would be easier for him.
It's just, it's just a building, if you looked at the garage, it's a substantial-sized garage, net is, is pretty much full.
Can you address the hardship, it seems like a personal benefit here, not a hardship?
Well, um, there, there is a financial hardship with regards to the property and trying to convey off one of the parcels of land and retain ownership. He could potentially work this the opposite way and grant himself an easement to continue to use the garage, however, the financial implications of doing that and dealing with potential nursing home settlements and things of that nature, to be able to separate the properties would make things a lot easier and create less of a hardship than what he's going through.
Why can't he just sell the whole property as it is?
Because he wants to keep the garage.
So it's a personal benefit, a hardship?
Sure, but, but the hardship that's entailed is that this is a property that, that has been in the family for that long, that is full, he needs to sell the house for financial purposes, but, he would like to keep the garage, hopefully not have to sell that.
I understand your argument. Any members of the board have questions?
I just worry where this would go in the future. He gets tired of having it as a, as a workplace, and then we get a request to put a house in that little lot.
Well, again, the board can condition this variance that that could never happen. And the proposed use, in a commercial mill district, a, a garage structure that is not an accessory to a primary structure is allowed in this district. So you can have a garage for multi-uses on its own piece of land. Normally, you need to have to have a garage as an accessory structure to the primary structure in a residential district. That's not what we have here, this is a commercial district that allows for a garage for this use and more intense uses to be on its own piece of land. So, the actual use of the structure is allowed, it's the size of the lots and the building setbacks that don't meet the requirements, but the existing lot doesn't meet the building setbacks or the area as well. So we're not starting with a conforming condition to start with. If we were taking a conforming condition, and that's always a discussion we have, and making a non-conforming, I could understand being against something to that nature, but this is already a non-conforming condition. The uses would not change.
We have no issue then, if there, I'm just speaking for myself, if, if, if there was a condition on this, that if you allowed the subdivision, that the condition would be to maintain at least three parking spaces on Lot Two for use of Lot One?
Yes, and that would be a deed restriction on the deed through an easement.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, absolutely. And that would run in perpetuity.
Run with the title.
As well as the condition of never be able to convert this to anything other than a garage for storage or something.
Anyone here in favor of this petition? Anyone here opposed?
I, I will, Bill, you have a minute?
I, I actually agree with Mr. Cawkins in that this just sets up, from a planning standpoint, a lot of future problems, even with these conditions coming back and trying to revise them, it just, from a planning standpoint, I, I just, I find long-term future, me or somebody ten or fifteen years down the road, it's just fraught with problems. And it's a, it's a two thousand seven hundred and some odd square foot lot, I just agree with Mr. Cawkins.
Um, well, I'm gonna make a motion to allow the subdivision subject to specific conditions that Lot Two provide three parking spaces to be specifically used in existing Lot One in that three-family house, that Lot Two be specifically conditioned that it's to be used as a garage and have no residential use. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Who's second? Oh, the five voting would be Mr. DuPere, attorney, probably not myself, Mr. Cawkins and Mr. Frank. There's a second.
We needed to state the five people voting.
I'll second.
And the vote on, all those in favor?
Aye.
No. All those opposed?
Thank you very much.
I'll get up, stand for this one.
Dave, you can vote on this next one.
You're too willing.
All right, agenda item number four, Agostino Ponte, one sixty County Street, Lot K, five twenty-five. Variance request to subdivide parcel into three lots, constructing a new single-family dwelling on each, lot size fifty-eight hundred, forty-one hundred, thirty-five hundred square feet, waiver requirements in the G District.
Good evening, again for the record, Dan Aguiar of Sitech Engineering, here this evening on behalf of Agostino Ponte, who is the property owner of the real estate located at one sixty County Street. For anybody who's been in the city for a long enough time, you'll know that this would be, was the location of TNRC cover, little poster right at the corner of County and Rock Cliff. It sits in a G District, which is a, um, single and up to a three-family district, and as you look through the surrounding properties, you will notice five-family dwellings, six-family dwellings, a thirty-five-unit apartment complex behind us, some commercial uses across the street. Directly abutting of us are two single-family homes. You'll see directly at one seventy-eight, a single-family home of forty-three hundred, forty-three seventy square feet, and then another single-family home just up behind what would be Lot One. When I, Mr. Pont approached me with regards to this, we were first looking at this as constructing, and, and this will correct the error in, in the application. By right, the applicant can build a three-family, can create it to two lots, could build a three-family on one, consisting of eight thousand square feet, and a two-family on another, of sixty-five hundred square feet, and we have an excess area to do that. When looking into the area, and when Mr. Pont discussed this with the neighbor, they requested that he attempt to build single-family homes. Problem with building single-family homes is he could only build two single-family homes, and the neighborhood would like him to build singles, just maybe two blocks further east, where a Michael Conception church was, they recently built, I think fifteen or seventeen single families there. That, excuse me, did require some relief as well. So the neighborhood is slowly changing from these large, unkept apartment buildings into a single-family nature. So, we have this corner lot, which gives us frontage on both streets, has a bit of an odd configuration where we have the finger of Lot One extending further east, that's why Lot One actually exceeds the area requirement to be fifty-eight hundred square feet, where we only need five thousand. So total area, we're fairly close to meeting, meeting fifteen thousand square feet, so we're four hundred, uh, yes, four hundred square feet short of having the area for three singles. But, that area does provide enough for a three-family and a two, when we put them on two lots. So the requests for waivers would be the reduction in area, the reduction in lot coverage, you see each lot we have proposed with a maximum being thirty-five percent, which is on Lot Two. All the lots would have the required frontage in the district, which is fifty feet. All of the exterior lot lines, we would meet the building setbacks, it's only interior lot lines to ourselves that we would be seeking relief with regards to building setback. So I think for the good of the neighborhood, for, to allow this gentleman to build three single-family homes in lieu of another three-family and another two-family, I think it would be a benefit for, for everyone involved. Most, most specifically, the abutment at one seventy-eight County Street, that would rather see a single-family home built next door than another three and another two.
But if you build three, it's going to be non-conforming, if you built two, it would be conforming.
That's correct.
So why not build two?
Build two...
Just have two lots, two houses.
Two singles?
Yeah.
Because, when, when the applicant purchased this property, his intention was to build a three and a two. So he was asked by the neighbor, could you build singles? And that doesn't work. When we have the, the shape of the lot that we have, and the cost of building a three and a two, or what he was going to build, and what would be realized from that, we have to be able to match that to appease that neighbor and build three singles, not two singles.
So if you did build two, it would be conforming, it's just financially better for your client to have three lots?
It's, it's...
Or he could go three and two.
For the neighborhood, not just for the client.
Do any members of the board have questions?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we would meet every other requirement, and again, this is a G District, in an area where just about nothing is conforming, nothing.
Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is anyone here opposed? Is there a motion from a member of the board? Oh, I'm sorry, that's, Mr. Roth, any input?
If you were to look at approving it, I would request that you specifically require site plan review, minimum of two parking spaces, and, um, since the variances aren't listed out, it's the, um, it's the dimensions and lot coverage percentage per the plan submitted, that's dated August eleventh. I think you cover most of all of...
I think they're all on there.
It's the eight, eight-foot setback interior lines, the lot coverages of the three lots, I believe is the, and the lot areas.
Correct.
I move approval based upon site review, two parking spaces as presented on the plan, and other dimensions as presented on the plan. Second.
All those in favor? Those opposed? Okay, agenda item number five. Tuttle Street, King Philip Street, and Tripp Street, I believe we received a letter to ask us to table this matter till the November meeting?
Yes, the November meeting.
The November meeting? Is there, first of all, is everyone here in favor or opposed to this?
Remove approval of postponement till our November meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
And, agenda item number six, Cody Enterprises, three twenty-three French Street, Lot M, twenty-four twenty-eight. Variance request to change use from a salon back to professional medical use in the S District, lot size sixty-seven thirty-two square feet.
Is Greg done?
I believe so.
Yeah, okay. Let's get this going up here. Good evening, again for the record, Dan Aguiar of Sitech Engineering, here this evening on behalf of the landowner, Cody Enterprises LLC. This is with regards to real estate at three twenty-three French Street, which you would historically know as, most recently, it was Glow, it was a salon, hair salon, and that was through a variance that was granted back in, we did the petition back in two thousand...
Seven.
Seven, right?
Yes.
And then previous to that, there was a variance granted to allow for professional medical office spaces, and that's actually where Dr. Cody had some office space. This is right at the corner of Highland Avenue, where directly to, across the street from Charlton, so directly to our south, there is a building that was most recently granted a variance to create a restaurant, cafe, and I believe they've just opened up, they've done a wonderful job on that building. Right at the very corner is the big white building, that, that is right now a mixed professional office space, which was granted relief around the same time as the initial relief was granted for, for three twenty-three. Because we're just changing, um, commercial uses in an S District, most people would say, well, why aren't you here as, just as a special permit if it's less detrimental? It's because the two commercial uses were done so by variance, not just as a pre-existing non-conforming condition, so any change in use for this building requires an actual variance, not a special permit, because the, the non-conforming condition goes through a variance, which makes it not non-conforming. So, when we submitted the petition, there is handicap parking off of French Street currently. Again, what's shown on this plan is, is one hundred percent existing conditions, so we're just gonna be taking the interior space and refitting that out from a salon into professional office, medical use.
And it was in two thousand four, that was what it was used for?
That's what it was again, right, but that variance has since been considered void since they got the variance, you know, that followed after.
Any changes to the existing of the building?
Uh, from the exterior of the building, there'll be no change, no, there will be interior space change, because now, well, they went from smaller rooms to a larger open space for a salon, now they'll be going back to some other, you know, some smaller spaces. Since then, the owner of the building has created this rear parking area that you see, coming off of Highland Avenue and then also behind Glow. Under the initial application, before Glow came in, I don't believe there was any parking to the back of this building, so the first commercial variance that was granted for professional use didn't require any off-street parking in the back, however, there is now off-street parking in the back that was required under Glow's, the salon variance.
And access to that is...
Right now, right now, these properties are owned by Cody Enterprises, both properties. Two separate lots, two separate buildings, two separate uses. The building inspector, upon reviewing our initial plan, and I'm hoping you have a revised plan, required or requested that we make sure that we have protected legal access from Highland Avenue to that rear parking lot. Again, similar to the, the last, it's all well and good to say, yes, we'll be able to do this, as they always have, but we made sure that we included that easement, proposed easement on the revised plan, and that...
It doesn't exist.
It does not exist right now, no.
So that would be a condition?
That would be a proposed easement, and that would be a condition of approval prior to, even prior to the conveyance of the property, is that that easement plan be, be reported. Attorney Peter Salino is handling the sale of these properties, and he's already prepared the easement documentation for this, so to have that reported. The parking lot is, is still there, but there, so there will be allowed access through three oh two Highland Avenue to get to that rear parking area of three twenty-three.
Is it a crossover parking and access agreement?
No.
Just, just an access?
Just access.
Okay.
Yeah. As you can see, the two different sized buildings, they want to ensure that the spaces that are shown for three oh two remain as spaces for three oh two.
One of the spaces is owned by both?
Yes, out to the back, yeah, exactly.
So rock, paper, scissors?
I would say that...
Is that rock, paper, scissors?
No, I, I would say that the majority of the area is shown on, on three oh two.
Is, um, is there any entrance from French Street to, no?
Just a handicap.
Do you think it'll access?
No.
No, no. There is, on the abutting property, if you don't mind, there is a curb cut here, that, that they can come in here and sit on this paved area, but this is now grass and there's an elevation difference that comes down like this, so you can't get from here to the back.
What's this here?
That's a handicap.
This is existing parking off of this driveway now, and that's already striped, that's in place, this is an existing walkway that brings you to the main entrance, and then a walkway that brings you around to the back of the building.
So obviously handicap parking, say.
Correct.
Does front of that building have about three spaces there with a curb cut, or, I know, one was marked with a handicap.
There's two, yeah, well...
Oh, there are two there.
Because what happens is, I think you might be looking at, because there is one off of here at this lot, but there's a singular driveway and then a space in a hatch spot, which puts you handicap right at the door for that. Because with the elevation difference, you can't get handicap accessibility from the back of the lot into the building, you would need an elaborate ramp system, so the handicap access is through the front door. Hours of operation, I would suggest they would be six to eight, seven days a week, in case anybody required a medical afternoon appointment. I don't believe she has specific tenants, so it would be a general professional office and, and medical use in the structure now. Well, you see through a lot of, you see a lot of it at, up around St. Luke's, but you're starting to see more of it here, where different providers that are associated with certain hospitals are buying up all the buildings, if you look around St. Luke's, all the historic buildings, they actually purchase them, South Coast buys those buildings, and they're starting to do that around Charlton as well. This would be an independent provider, but that does work hand-in-hand with the hospital lot.
Any questions for members of the board? Is anyone here in favor?
Oh, if I can, just before, I don't want you to act before. Sideage would be limited to non-illuminated. Signage would be limited to non-illuminated on the building itself, and I believe there is one sign that's currently on the site now, I wish I had shown it on the plan. So we would limit our signage to the existing signage on the property, and then building-only non-illuminated signs.
No signage on the access? I'm just not sure how people know it the way it is going to be like.
Well, there's no other way. When you, when you get there, you realize that that's how you, that's how you get in. I don't know if the abutting property at 302 has any signage, but we could take a look at that. But there would be no additional business signage.
You could do a small directional sign.
Right.
I'm sure that can be done though.
I haven't got to that part. Sorry. Anyone here in favor? Anyone here opposed? Mr. Roth?
No, it's changing back to a use that was always there. Part of me is wondering if variances run with the land, if you, even if you have two variances, you could probably, it's six, one half dozen another, whether you actually need a variance, to be honest with you. You're playing a conservative game here, I understand that.
If it wasn't that somebody was buying the property, so if Cody, if Cody Enterprises was retaining ownership, then we probably would not have gone through this. But when somebody's purchasing a property, they want to make sure their eyes are down and...
Yeah. I doubt whether you need a variance, but I know why you're doing it, because it's being sold. I would recommend issuing the variance with the approval that hours of operation are six to eight, they have the non-illuminated building sign, and that, that the easement across the adjacent building off of Highland Avenue at 302, you know, be required.
Prior to conveyancing, Mr. Mitchell?
Do I have a motion from a member of the board?
Move to grant.
With those conditions, as laid out by Mr. Roth?
Parking and hours of operation.
Signage and the easement.
Condition that the easement is in place prior to...
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you very much. Have a good weekend. If you don't get a summary.
Do we have any citizen input?
I'll send you a photo.
So a second?
Second.
No, citizens input.
I heard it was...
Oh, sorry, are we here?
All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is now adjourned.